Hey guys, uh, it's Aaron here back again. Um, haven't really streamed much lately. I haven't really had the time to play any poker. Tonight, however, I was thinking about doing something a little bit different and just going over some uh, DTO type stuff. I just got this app about a couple of weeks ago. It's a really good app. It kinda like helps you with uh, finding game theory optimal solutions for different spots and uh, plug your leaks. I've found out basically right now that in the big blind, I am exceptionally doing exceptionally exceptionally well. Playing very close to GTO. However, um, the spots that I'm struggling with the most are the spots where I am uh, out of position as the pre-flop raiser, like uh, low jack versus hijack and hijack versus cutoff. That's the spot, I'm making a lot of mistakes there, mostly like with sizings, like I'm pretty good at knowing when to check or when to bet, but my sizings are off there and I'm losing value, so. Definitely something I gotta work on. I'm going away for a week here for work and I, I'm basically at my job, I do virtually nothing when I'm away for work. I work like three hours a day and the rest of the time I just sit around, do nothing. So I'm probably gonna do a lot of work, flopzilla work. I'm probably gonna do a lot of um, like just range versus range analysis study and uh, yeah, just a lot of flopzilla work. I've done quite a bit, but I think it's just good to do a refresher course and uh, do that. Anyway, I got my notepad opened up, DTO study, June twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, hands that I make a mistake, I usually like write the reason out why I did. So without further ado, let's uh, let's get to this. Alright, so this is a three-bet pot. So you gotta watch that. I've, I've screwed up there and I've uh, not realized it's three-bet pot and then I check like right here, it's like a pure bet for sure. A seven-five rainbow. Um, forty-nine effective, pot is twenty-two, the SPRs are like two and a half, give or take. I'm gonna guess we're probably gonna go small because you know, he probably has some like eight-sevens, pocket nines, pocket tens, pocket, pocket jacks, per maybe, pocket eights. I think we're just gonna go small here. And clicks it back, clicks it back. Okay, these are fun, these are fun. Um. So what happens? He raised, I three-bet, he calls. I see bet twenty-five percent pot. He clicks it back, or he doesn't really click it back. I guess this is a three X. Um, what kind of draws can he really have here? He doesn't really have that many draws. Does he have any bluffs? Like not really. Any, maybe like, he doesn't have eight-six, so he should fold that to a three-bet. Um, nine-eight of spades or something like that, maybe like something like queen jack of spades, queen jack of diamonds, queen jack of clubs, king queen. I think king queen be a really good one here. Um, with the backdoors, just because then he's blocking our ace kings and our ace queen combos, which are gonna be the ones that we're gonna have the most. Call, I guess. I don't know, that might be a mistake. We got a four on the turn. Check. Need jams. Of course we're calling. Kinda sucks though, it's a pretty bad turn. If he was, did have like nine-eight or something. I played it good. We played it good. Alright, let's evaluate. Twenty-five percent pot, checking's a negative twenty. Betting half pots in eight EV or whatever, eight points. So we did the best possible thing on the flop. Um, we should've jammed. We should've jammed flop. I just thought he might have some kind of weird bluffs and we wanna keep him in with those bluffs, so we just call. Plus, we're not too susceptible to being outdrawn here. Okay. Um, turn, checking are all in, are both acceptable, and we have to call. Alright, so we were about fifty effective, I think. Sixty big blinds effective. Sixty big blinds effective. We three-bet, cutoff in, or it was button, I think, in, doesn't really matter. Big blind with ace of clubs, jack of spades, ace of clubs, jack of spades, and he calls. Flop is ace-seven-five rainbow. We correctly C-bet five-point-five into twenty-two. And he raises to fifteen-point-five big blinds. And we just call. Here, we actually are supposed to just uh, jam it all in. Here we're actually just supposed to jam it all in. And then I try to like decipher, like why would I wanna jam it in here? So I, I really don't, like what kind of raising range does he have here? Like, like if we look at this, what kind of raising range does he have here? Like, like low equity bluffs would be like nine-eight suited, I guess, like maybe nine-eight suited, like I, I, and are we really getting a call there with ninety suited? It's better to like check, I don't know. I play low stakes. So like when I see weird shit like this, I'm thinking, you know, the guy uh, the guy's just donking off. Like I guess uh, uh, likely to get it all in with uh, ace-ten, ace-nine, ace-eight combos. That may shut down. Shut down on turn if it is a queen, jack or a king. I'm, I'm thinking that's the only logical reason I, we wanna jam, cuz if the turn's a jack, queen or king. Queen, jack or king, then uh, it might scare off his ace-nine, ace-eight, that he's playing really badly. So anyway, I'm gonna kinda look, I'm gonna upgrade this to the solver version where they like, you can actually see the ranges we're supposed to do certain things in. Um, I just haven't yet, so probably get to it. Alright, next one. Forty-three big blinds, forty-five effective, single raise pot. We raise on the hijack with king-ten off. Small blind calls, it becomes ten-nine-seven. Um, very connected board, connects really well with the small blinds range. We don't have a diamond in our hand. Um, I think we get check raised a ton here. Uh, and a lot of his bluffs have a decent amount of equity. Um, he might have jack-eight suited, he has jack-nine suited, he has diamonds, a lot of ten-X that he flats here. Um, if we're gonna bet, we're gonna bet big, but I could seriously, I could see some checking here. So we're gonna bet. This is one of our best uh, tens though, right? Like maybe queen-ten and jack-ten. Well, I guess jack-ten. What, what are, like what tens would we wanna check here? Okay, queen-ten probably be a check. Jack-ten, I think we can bet. Uh, ten-eight as an open header, so we'll probably check like back ten-eight to protect our checking range and maybe jack-ten to protect our checking range. And then, no, I, I don't know. I might check back ten-eight sometimes. But I think king-ten, I don't know, let's go big. We'll size up. We get check raised, um, for twelve, pot is twenty-three, we got thirty-eight behind. All in. Do I gotta click enter or something? Is that not an option or something? Oh, they broke. If you watch my streams before shit like this, always happens. Is that the wrong decision? Is that why? Evaluation. Fold is a plus eight, call, jam is really bad. Ooh. Oh, I see, I see. I gotta put it in classic. Okay, yeah. Ooh, so we fold. When he check raises here, we gotta fold. I guess he does have a lot of two pair combinations. Like we can go look at the range here. Uh, hijack versus small blind, forty-five. Hijack versus small blind, forty-five. Or, yeah, small blind versus hijack, sorry, I'm getting it backwards. Um, small blind versus hijack, uh, forty-five. Alright, this is his flating range. So ten-eight, ten-nine, nine-eight, nine-seven. This is why I gotta do flopzilla work, because like he's like, king-ten pure, queen-ten seventy percent, uh, jack-eight, he has pure, uh, jack-nine. Eight-seven, eight-seven as a ton of equity versus us. He's ripping it in with these, so yeah, I guess we just fold when we get check raised here with a top pair. Good kicker. So that's really cool. I, I think that's really cool, eh? Like checking it back, this combo we checked back. I was thinking, do we check this one back too? And like I almost checked it back, but I'm like, what ten-X are we gonna be checking back here? Like, and which ones are we gonna be betting? I knew we had some check backs with tens. I was just thinking, yeah, I guess jack-ten, ten-eight, we check back and then or we bet, I mean, sorry. And then the ones we wanna check back are like queen-ten and king-ten, and then maybe we bet ace-ten. So. Alright, forty-five effective. I'll write this one down quick. Forty-five effective, we raise on the hijack, uh, with what the hell suits, king of clubs, ten hearts, and the small blind calls. Flop is is ten of spades, nine of diamonds, seven of diamonds, small blind checks. We C-bet big. Here, with our king-ten combinations versus small blind. We want to be checking this combo back. Also, when we bet here and get check raised. Shit, raised. We actually just fold top pair. Due to the strength of small blinds' calling range on this connected ten-nine-seven two-tone board. Board. Alright, moving on. So that's interesting. Fuck that one up. That's okay though. These are all like tough decisions. I'm fifty-six percent GTO right now, so. I think it's went up a little bit since I uh, since I started doing this. Alright, jack-four, queen-jack-eight versus button, twenty-seven effective. We're gonna check to begin. Oh yeah, we gotta put it in the classic. I'll do it next hand. He bets small, uh, this definitely isn't a check raise. I think maybe like, I don't really think we're gonna be checking raising any jack-X here. Um, nine-eight maybe, nine-eight probably be like our only pair check raise, maybe ten-eight. And then, and then we're gonna be check raising a lot of our nine-X hands and ten-X hands. Um, like, maybe like ten-seven, ten-six. Ten-nines are nuts, so we'll check raise that one. Maybe like ace-nine. Ace-nine, king-nine, shit like that, so. Alright, we're gonna just call here. We're not folding to a small bet for sure. Ace on the turn, we're gonna check. He bets really small, um. Pretty bad card for us. Like, and like, he's, he's gonna be betting small on this card the most because it's just so, so much better for his range, I'm pretty sure, so. We're just gonna fold now, I'm gonna say. Okay, excellent. Checking flop, best decision. Calling flop, best decision. Turn, we check, no leading, obviously. And on the river we fold, so we played that one excellent. Right on, moving on. Okay, low jack versus big blind, ten-five deuce, he checks. Ten-five deuce, king-jack. Alright, ten-five deuce. I think we have some big bets on this board for sure. Um, like overbetting sometimes, I would imagine, because there's no straight draws and it's rainbow. Uh, it's really not all that many good cards we can barrel on, but like if we get check raised here, we're, we can just fold, so. Excellent. Yeah, I do think that with this combination, we're probably only gonna be betting like sixty percent. I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be some checks here. Yeah, like uh, betting small's fine and checking's actually bad with king-jack. I think with the, uh, we wanna bet the, the heart combination here. Uh, just due to the fact that uh, if we get check raised, we're gonna easily just fold. Um, but with the backdoor flush draw, like if there was a heart on board, then we probably wanna do a little bit more checking, cuz the EV of checking in this hand is pretty high. Like. So yeah, move on. Got another excellent one. That's good. Okay, ten-three deuce with king-three. Ooh, what the fuck? Okay, what happened? Um, he three-bets, we flat. He goes really big. He goes really big. There's not a heart, so I'm just gonna fold. Oh, it's wrong. We're really deep. There's not a heart. We don't have any straight draw and we have a pair of threes. He bats fifteen, you say right here, fifteen-eight-twenty-six. So he goes reasonably big, but like with his range, I don't even think he has to go all that big with his range to make us fold stuff. Yeah, I, I, like from a GTO standpoint, I think it's probably a, a call, I guess. But like in-game, like where he's not gonna have all the correct bluffs that he should have, um, we can probably just fold this one without a heart on board, but do we ever turn this one into a bluff and actually raise? Like that's the question. Like thirty-nine, that's the sizing, so like two-point-two X. Well, we block pocket kings, we block pocket kings. I don't think he ever three-bats threes, nobody does. Call. I guess. In-game though, I think we can easily just make an exploitative fold. Or, yeah, exploitable fold, sorry. Okay. Wow, yeah, like in-game, you can, you can fold this. He's like overbetting one and a half X pot on the turn. Excellent. Alright, let's see. Do we ever raise? That was my question. No, we don't ever raise this combo. I didn't think so, that's why I didn't choose it, but so we gotta call, but you know, like this locked feature. I need a high roller subscription to view the GTO frequencies for each action. I think I'm gonna upgrade, but you know, I'm still just playing around with the app right now. Usually I try to set a budget for poker study every month of like a hundred bucks. At ma, at the most, hundred, hundred bucks a month, and I, I spent a hundred thirty on other stuff, so. Okay. So I don't really think I need to write this one down, just due to the fact that uh, in-game, like I'm not gonna, I can probably make an exploitable fold here. Versus this guy that's sized up on this board with king-three suited, cuz they're not gonna have the correct amount of bluffs, so. Yeah, king-jack, so lucky him, he got a jack on the turn, I guess. Um, well played by him too, because he really shouldn't have any jacks in his range there. Okay, eight-five-four, check, he checks. We have a possible straight draw on board, so that eliminates overbetting, right there, that there's the straight on board. He could, with six-seven. Um, well they say, this is like one of our best hands. We're definitely gonna have some big betting on this board, we're probably just size up, I would imagine. He folds. Okay, that one was easy. Oh, evaluation, yeah, like, we can't, we can't really do anything but bet big there. Eight, eight-five-four, eight-five-three, nine-six-three, nine-six-four, like these boards that we're gonna bet big. Um, just because of all the straight draws and yeah, he had ten-nine. It's kinda interesting he doesn't check raise here. This looks like a pretty good check raise candidate, I would think, but anyway, continue. Nine-ten off on the hijack. Forty, hijack sixty, we'll check out a sixty chart here. Hijack sixty, I don't think we opened this hand on the hijack. Ten-nine off, first in ranges. Hijack forty, I got hijack forty and sixty, I don't have a fifty. I'm gonna sign up for pre-flop academy and fill in the blanks though here soon. There's like a website called pre-flop academy. And uh, they have like multi-way charts and they have like all kinds of uh, GTO charts for like, just some of the places where to fill in the blanks. So, for forty, we never open it, uh, and then it's like a twenty-five percent or third, probably a forty percent frequency on the hijack at uh, sixty. That's, that's interesting. I, I purely fold this, so maybe I should start opening it at sixty. Let's write that down. Sixty big blinds, deep on the hijack. We are supposed to be opening ten-nine off forty percent of the time. Start opening it, it purely with players that have low three-bet percentages. Yeah, because you know, people don't three-bet enough in game, especially in like passive low stakes games, so you can get away with opening hands like that pure. I just wouldn't think it would be like a full, like at forty, it's like five percent. You don't even have to worry about that, but yeah, if there's low three-bet percentages below like seven percent on their hu, on my heads-up display, then yeah, we can definitely be opening that hand, I guess. So that's cool. Click the save button a couple times. Alright, so big blind calls, check, um, ten, ten-ten-X, ten-ten-X. There's only one size, of course we're betting. I think, yeah, we're just gonna be betting small here for the most part, especially when it's like kind of a lockdown board in some ways, especially when we have a ten. Like I guess there are some draws available, but like paired boards, we usually bet small, right? And he had nine-two suited, so, which is pretty much the bottom of his range. Okay, button versus, or big blind on the, okay, we three-bet. Button calls, we have pocket sixes, um. Uh, big blind versus button. Big blind versus button for sixty, fifty or sixty, I think. Versus button. I don't, I don't three-bet this hand ever, so I'm just kinda interested to see. Pocket sixes. Never three-bets at uh, what is this? I don't know, this is acting up. At sixty, we never three-bet. Oh. Why is it black? I don't know why it's black like that. It's never was like that. Sixty versus button. Yeah, we never three-bet sixes, so that's kinda weird that we have sixes here. Cuz I'm never three-betting sixes here. Uh, at forty, do we ever three-bet sixes? I, I, I don't know. Yeah, we jam sixes. Yeah, we're gonna jam, we're never three-betting this. Do a little bit of three-betting with eights. Um, and nines, which, which is fine, cuz you know, it gives us good board coverage. To be three-betting some of these eights and nines, middle-connected, or middle pocket pairs. Yeah, and then you know, our ace-X and king-X blocker bluffs. And queen-X, I suppose. Usually I just pick from like all these. I'll open these, oh, three-bet with these more frequently and then not so much these ones. These are just better blocker hands, I usually just, I favor them. Okay. Ace, queen, three, it's, it's kinda like a range bet board, but we do have a little bit of showdown value. We're check with this combo. I think we're gonna bet small and frequently. Why, why is it orange? I'm, I'm just figuring out this new software. Do we check? No. Okay, so that's the right size, eleven. So we, we bet a little bit bigger. We do have the range and not advantage, I guess. Um. Queen on the turn. I think that like he has a lot of queen-X, so we're gonna check. Check, check. River's a three. Okay, we're, um, the, it bricked out, the turn and river, it kinda bricked out, so I think we're gonna take one stab small. Okay. We're gonna give up then. Check, check, we're probably just giving up, I guess. I, like, I know we have better bluffs than this, but I never three-bet this hand to begin with. And he bets twenty-two. Oh wow, I really screwed this one up. I really screwed this one up. So, I bet small, that was bad on this flop. Okay, so we got about half pot. Uh, we're checking the turn, which is fine. Which is the best decision. River, we check. What? River, we check. Okay, and then we gotta call off on the river. Okay. This was sixty effective? Alright, sixty big blinds, effective. We three-bet button with pocket sixes. Flop comes ace, queen, three rainbow. Here we say that we should C-bet uh, twenty-five percent pot. However, with the range and not advantage. I'll come in back and clean these up when I review them. However, with the range and not advantage, we need to be sizing up. Up and betting uh, eleven into twenty-two. Big blinds, I guess, okay. So like what is he calling? What is he? I think that like when we get called here, like when we three-bet and we get called, I think that the button's probably gonna have about maybe eight percent of his calls, seven or eight percent of his calls are gonna be pocket pairs, like pocket fours through, through jacks. So, seven or eight percent of his range is gonna be that. And then it's the, like once we have the ace and the queen on board, it's gonna like kinda from card removal, like it's probably gonna go up to about twelve percent. So twelve percent of his range is gonna be pocket pairs. Then he has a lot of like suited connectors that totally bricked out. So that's like probably twenty percent of his range, so then we're at like thirty-three percent of his range. So yeah, it's definitely a plus EV bet to, cuz like he's gonna be folding. I don't really think he continues much to a bigger bet with king-jack or king-ten or queen-ten, or yeah, queen-ten. Or jack-ten, ten-nine, all these hands are probably gonna fold to the big bet. So yeah, and they're gonna float the small ones, so the more I'm thinking about this, it makes sense, right? And this is why we do these. Um, and that's why I have to work on range versus range analysis, mostly in the out-of-position situations, but here, yeah, like it makes a lot of sense. I don't really have a three-bet calling charts right now, but uh, yeah, I will eventually, but anyway, that one's kinda cool. Um, and we gotta call off on the river. Um, the draw's bricked out, I guess. It goes check, check, and then we check river. We underwrapped our hand, that's what it is. We just underwrapped our hand. I just don't think people are finding in-game these ki, like a bluff here, like ever. So maybe like, what are the best bluffs here? It would be like jack-ten without a club, jack-ten without a club maybe. And ten-nine without a club, king-ten, king-jack without a club. Those are probably gonna be your op, like premium bluffs here. Um, maybe not having a king in our hand is very good though, if you think about it, because a lot of our three-bats are king-X. And if we have a king in our hand, then it get, it discounts a lot of our king-X, so maybe not. Alright, continue. Uh, queen deuce, single raise pot. Uh, easy check spot. We have a shitty club, or we have a shitty diamond that really uh, doesn't matter. Uh, we're just gonna fold. Alright. Nine-eight suited. Single raise pot. We can three-bet this though, I would imagine. Forty, small blind versus hijack. Maybe we need to be a little bit deeper, to be honest, uh. I, I think we're deeper when, when we three-bet this. I'm almost positive about that, but I could be wrong. Ten-nines, or nine-eight suited, pure call, yeah. But once we got up to eighty versus hijack, then it becomes more than okay, right? Just, just because like when we're deeper stacked, we three-bet these suited connectors, so. But not so much at this stack depth. We, we're just have a lot more polarized type of range where we're three-betting like, or we're just re-jamming a lot of this stuff. So, and then our three-bats are kinda polarized, like these suited aces, we three-bet fold. Um, we, in-game, like we can just re-jam with these hands as well. I usually do, just to simplify, like I don't really think it matters too much. Just sixes, sevens and eights, but. Alright, so we got a really good flop. This is one of our worst flush draws we could have here, we're oh, yeah, we're in the small blind. Okay, so we got a pretty good flop for our hand. Ace-seven-four, um, I'm just wondering like, how often are we gonna be check-raising here? Uh, probably just check calling. Probably just gonna be check calling. Uh, I could be wrong, no. Do we ever check, raise this combo? And like if we're gonna be check-raising flush draws, which flush draws will we wanna be check-raising? We have two overcards of the seven, which is nice. So, um, if we had like what would it be? Five-six? We probably just wanna pile the money in, I guess. We don't really have any worse flush draws in this, don't we? In this scenario. Small blind versus, do we have any worse flush draws here? I don't think so. Eight, uh, nine-eight suited. We have eight-seven, but that made a pair, seven-six, open-ended straight draw, six-five, thirty-five percent of the time. Uh, this hand has a backdoor straight draw as well. Um, there's an ace on board, so we don't have any overcards. Let's go with the raise, fuck it. Let's go with the raise here. Okay, so we do raise. Uh, get a queen on the turn. Really. This is a better card for his range, definitely. Like we look at our, our range, like we really, we have a little bit of queen-X. This is a better card for his range, definitely, like we look at our, our range, like we really, we have a little bit of queen X, but not really, like. Like, we have off, queen ten off sometimes, queen jack off, I guess. You know, we probably have about the same amount of queens, but I don't really think it matters because there's an ace on board. We have about the same amount of ace X tier too, but, uh, but he has all these good ones, right? Or we don't have these good ones, I mean, cause we three bet these. So I'm gonna check, I don't think I'm gonna blast off this. Do I blast off with his hand? Maybe we do. Ace, queen, like. I think like if we're gonna blast off our ha- blast off hands are gonna be like twos to fives with the fucking, with a di- with a diamond in them. Those are probably gonna be like our premium blast off hands, and then maybe like queen, jack and jack ten. Of clubs. Of clubs and hearts, maybe? It's because we don't block his folding range on the river when it, uh, diamonds up or spades up. So. Oh, boy, I think we're gonna keep going. Probably just go small. Nope, I'm wrong. We're go geometric. Okay, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Okay, we're gonna go geometric here. Call, we get a diamond on the river, so of course, we're gonna jam a diamond. If it wasn't a diamond though, we're not gonna jam, right? Easy all in. Yeah, we really don't wanna be turning flush draws into bluffs. Um, on the river very often, just due to the fact that we were really blocking his folding range, having two diamonds in her hand, cause he's gonna call along with flush draws. It's gonna be a big part of his range, so we don't really turn these into three barrel bluffs. So I went a little bit too small in turn. Okay, so. Forty effective, forty-five effective. Forty-five, big blinds, effective. Hijack opens. We call. In the small blind with nine of diamonds, eight of diamonds. Flop is, I gotta actually put the suits in this time, ace of spades. Seven of diamonds, four of diamonds, uh, we really. Don't have any worse flush draws here. And we have. The backdoor straight draw. Uh, so this hand. Is a pure check raise. Apparently. Uh, turn is. Is the queen of hearts. Turn is the queen of hearts. Uh, what was the sizing we chose there? We chose the, uh. Actually, checking's better. Yeah, I, I thought about checking, cause this card should, in theory, be better for him, but. Um, cause he has ace, queen. Are we ever three betting king, queen here? Probably. Yeah, we threw back king, queen off, so we do have four combinations of king, queen, but. Uh, he has all the king, queen ops and we don't, so. So yeah, checking makes a lot of sense here, um. But, you know, like, uh, my thi- thinking here was putting up that small bet. Uh, I think explo- exploitatively putting up that small bet on the turn with our flush draws. First opponents that really don't raise on the turn unless they have the nuts. Is gotta be kinda cool, because we're kinda like blocking and giving ourselves amazing odds to hit or flush on the river. Especially we don't plan on tripling off at the hand. So it's kind of an exploitative play to go small in the turn, so. Versus passive opponents, more than okay, but versus GTO opponents, probably not. Um, so yeah. Because it's like a lot, GTO opponent, a thinking opponent is probably gonna realize that we never would go small here with a set or. Uh, top two pair, we're never gonna go small there, but versus unthinking opponents that are passive, they're, they're just gonna call along and we're getting, giving ourselves amazing odds, it's almost like a blocking bet. Um, and we can always jam the river as well, uh, if we get there, so, but yeah. Checking's best. So, turn is the queen of hearts. The optimal play. With, fuck, sorry, play with our. Nine of diamonds, eight of diamonds, is to check. However. We chose. A thirty-three percent pot bet. On the turn. And that is never done. We have. To go geometric. Also, I'm gonna be playing a session on Monday and I'll be uploading it, so, uh, Monday night, I'm gonna play a session. So hopefully that goes well, it's my first session in a few weeks, like two, three weeks at least, I haven't really been playing, I've just been studying like crazy, I think I probably studied a hundred hours this month so far, maybe more. Just studying like crazy. Alright, continue. King, jack of spades, ten, ten, five, versus big blind, king, jack, ten, ten, five, ten, ten, five. I know. What kinda hands is, he's gonna be check raising a lot with like fives here, he's gonna be check raising a lot. He doesn't really have any straight draws. Um. This is like, again, this is another spot where range versus range analysis is really important, and I gotta study, like, uh. I think we wanna check here. I think we wanna check here, we don't wanna waste this hand. If he check raises, we're just not happy about it, and the EV and checking like these really good hands is. Very good, like he has a lot of king, seven off, king, six off, king, four off, king, three off. Um, and we don't wanna make those hands fold. Um, I guess we're gonna chop probably. No, we wouldn't chop with, versus king, six. If a king comes, it'd be kings and tens, jack kicker, yeah. As long as the queen doesn't come. So yeah, I think we wanna check this one back and keep him in with the worst hands. I'm gonna check. No way. Hmm, okay. Uh, small, be a small bet. He calls. Check, check. Yeah, I would like to get the, the ra- the, uh, upgraded version, so I can see what the frequency of each play would be. Um, yeah, deuce on the turn of clubs. Well, he check calls a lot of ace eyes here, he check calls, it's a brick. It's basically a brick and it's a club, so that kinda connects better with him, obviously, we have spades. So we're blocking the check calls he has on the flop that are backdoor flush draws of spades, like all of his king, three of spades, king, four of spades. Jack, four of spades, jack, three of spades, we block all those hands. So, that makes up quite a bit of his range, um, like a reasonable amount anyway. I think we have better bluffs here, I just think we have better bluffs here, we have a lot worse hands here to bluff with, so. I'm checking. Queen on the river. He bets two point one into eight. He bets quarter pot here, it's just kinda, it looks like a value bet with, uh. With a five. Or a deuce, I think we wanna raise. I think we wanna raise, I think this is a really good bluff combination here, we block king, queen, we block queen, jack, uh. You know, it's kinda like the nut low now, we have four cards to a straight, um, and we block jack ten and king ten, so. And, uh, we unblock his flush draws here, backdoor flush draws. So I think I'm gonna go for the raise. I got, I got, I think orange means like, yes, we can do that sometimes, but for the most part, uh. Not so much, maybe? Call? Okay, yeah, fold. I was like, what the fuck? Excellent, yeah, we always get them excellent now, because, yeah. So, on the flop, betting quarter pot is best, checking's really bad, actually. Okay, so turn comes, check, check, checking's the optimal decision, we got that right. Uh, river raising is at minus two. So it's fine, but like it's close to negative, uh, gonna render an, uh, it's like gonna render a negative expectation over time. So, yeah. But, you know, again, this is versus a GTO opponent and GTO opponents, uh. Call the correct frequencies. When we raise here, he probably should be calling with like most of his fives, most of his deuces a lot of the time. Like some of his deuces with like a blocker, like queen deuce or jack deuce and king deuce. So yeah, most of our opponents are gonna overfold on the river, um, so I think it's fine. It's like gonna render a profit, just because this number is almost profitable. But, uh, yeah. So folding's correct, obviously, um. Yeah, this is a decent one, thirty effective. Thirty, big blinds, effective. We raise on the hijack with king of spades, jack of spades, big blind calls. Flop is ten of spades. Ten of something. Uh, ten of diamonds, five of clubs. Big blind checks. We say. The EV of checking. Is high. And we should. Check behind. Behind. And realize our equity. And keep him in with his worst hands. However. We want to be going. For a small bet. Uh, turn is the two of clubs. Big blind checks. Uh, and we correctly. Check behind. River is the queen of hearts. Big blind bets two into eight. And we say raise. However. That is wrong. Versus this twenty-five percent pot bet. We just fold. But it's not like an awful play, like if it was an awful play, we get like a minus ten, right? We only got a minus two. So versus opponent that overfolds is probably gonna render a profit. And I'm generally aggressive, so. He had king five, see, like he had a fucking five, so can we get him off a five? Probably not versus GTO opponents, but versus opponents that aren't GTO, yes, we can get them off a five. So yeah, anyway, moving on. Continue. Oh, I clicked the wrong one. Continue. Alright, queen, five off. Alright, so we're gonna three bet this hand at like thir- twenty-five, thirty, big blinds deep, but some frequency, probably like twenty percent of the time, ten, fifteen, twenty percent. Ten, four deuce, uh, I think this is a pretty thin spot to check raise, to be honest. This would be pretty thin. He goes one and a half. Yeah, it's too thin. Really? It's not too thin. Alright. I would've thought this one was too thin. I think with like ace, five. Ace, five be a much better one, king, five, maybe. Yeah, I guess we have an overcard, backdoor flush draw and a backdoor straight draw. I just thought it would've been a little bit too thin, but I guess it's good, okay. We'll write this one down. Sixty, big blinds, effective, button raises. Raises and we call in the big blind with queen of spades, five of clubs. Flop is. I would've thought this was too thin. Ten of spades, four of spades. Four of spades, two of diamonds. We check. Yeah. Button bets small. Here, we thought check raising. Was too thin. However. With the queen high. Uh, backdoor flush draw. Backdoor straight draw. Yeah, yeah. I get it now. We check raise. Like I thought with the queen, with the queen blocker, it helps, but, um. So. Yeah, we just wanna check raise like a lo- medium size, we're not going huge here. We wanted to fold and apparently it's bad, we're overfolding here. I overfold though, in game. I just thought this would be a little bit too thin, but this is what it is. This is why we do these, right? Because we're getting better at poker. Uh, ace, king, deuce, um, versus button. Yeah, we're getting better at poker every day by doing shit like this, right? And eventually become a professional. So, yeah. Yeah, if you watch my previous videos, I've, I do a lot of session streaming, but I haven't really done anything like this yet. Five point six. Act- as a matter, like, uh, in this spot versus like under the gun. Oh. Oh shit, I did it again. Okay, this is a three bet pot, I didn't realize that. Okay, so, or sixty effective. Um, button opens, we three bet this, which is fine, I think, I think it's pretty much fine, um. Sixty, big blind versus button. Sixty, big blind versus button. King, jack off is probably like fifty percent, sixty percent? That's eighty. First button, king, jack, off. It's actually only like ten percent. King, jack suited is the fifty percent one. I see, okay, so yeah, still got a lot of good suited connectors, a little bit of this, uh, king, five, king, six, ace, five, ace, four suited. And then like straight linear type range. But polar, a little bit polarized, but. Okay, so. Yeah, well. We check, I think checking is more than okay here, like I probably would've checked a- anyway, um, just due to the fact that. A lot of his calls are ace X, like a ton of his calls are gonna be ace X, and we don't have a spade in our hand, so like we're gonna have a hard time barreling off here. Um, we're never folding to this small bet though, we're gonna call. Um, spade on the turn, really bad fucking card for us to come off. Um. Yeah, without, without a spade, right? Like it screws this up. Check, check, river's a nine, I do not see any reason to bet here, but I could be wrong. He bets twenty-five. Twenty-five into what? Twenty, twenty-five, pot's thirty-three bits pot. I think it's fine to fold here. But it's GTO, so our opponents apparently have, they have the correct bluffs, right, so. I guess we're calling, but I don't, I don't think it's a very good call in game. Yeah, he had an ace, yeah. What he bets pot, like. We don't even block spades. And he, he checked back the turn, like if he had some kinda spade bluff, he's probably gonna continue barreling off, so like what kind of hands can he have here besides an ace? Then he checks the turn, like. I don't, yeah, like this specific hand makes quite a bit of sense. Ace, five of hearts. I, I don't mind the check back on the turn of these five, like for sure, but I just don't know, I don't know, I don't think I. In game, like versus like a really aggressive opponent, I might find a call here, but. Um. Versus like typical low stakes players, I'm never calling here, cause they just don't bluff enough, so. Okay, king, king, four, we have nine, six. So. We got the flush draw. Uh, we have two sizings here, we have fifty percent pot sizings and we have twenty, twenty-five and fifty percent pot sizings always at the stack depth. For a c bet sizing, it's a king, king, X board, um, we're gonna be betting probably closed door whole range here. So. That's actually probably not true. We probably actually check like thirty percent of the time here. Um, because it's like. I'll show you the range here. For big blind at twenty-five, big blind versus, uh, oh, is there? Big blind versus hijack for twenty-five? Uh. Twenty-five. Look at all the kings he has. King, two off, king, three off, king, four off, king, five off, king, six off, king, seven off, like all of the kings, he has every king. So we're probably gonna have about thirty percent check backs here, it's just like a lot of junk, a lot of, or draws that are gonna relose directly poorly if for two check raise, et cetera. So. I used to think we betted our whole range, I betted our whole range here, but. It, like now that I've developed my game more, I realize we don't, I've learned that. Um, this particular hand. Do we ever check it back? I don't think so. I think we can check back some of our better flush draws, maybe, like queen, jack and jack ten. I, actually, I know that, we're gonna be checking back our queen jacks and our jack ten of spades and maybe your ten-nine of spades. Um. It's just like a thing to protect our checking range, we wanna check back the ones like that, because. We block the second best flush draw hands kinda thing, and that's what we're gonna protect our checking range with, this one here. In particular, I think we can bet small. Um, cause you know, we can't real- we're gonna get better hands to fold, we're gonna get his queen X, jack X to fold. Okay, we'll bank it on the turn, um. Okay, so it's a flush completer and it's an ace, and that, those two things, the nut ratio has changed. Like with the flush completer, because the big. Like with the flush completer because the big blind has a lot of flushes. Um, we have all the offsuit broadways in our range here, so. We're lacking in flushes, so that's kind of like leading me towards the, the 3 big blind bet here. But you know, I think with the, with the 9 high one, we probably just wanna go geometric and just get all the money in. Geometric is just betting, betting turn of river like equals. Kind of like equal sizes that puts all the money in kind of thing or equal percentages. Yeah, we're just gonna try to get all the money in here. I played it good. Alright. Uh, ooh, look at that. I was right. Like the nut ratio. Has shifted because it's a flush completer and it's an ace, which we usually size down on. The lot of our range due to the fact that it's such a good card for us and not the big blind. So I was right, like I was right, but I, I went geometric. Like I changed my mind on it. Um. Flop, we did the bet, we uh, bet, picked the correct bet size. Alright. King, king, 4, 9, 6. 30 big blinds effective. We raise. On the hijack with. 9 of spades, 6 of spades, big blind calls. Flop is king of spades, king of diamonds, 4 of spades. He checks. Uh, we c-bet small. Correctly. Turn brings. And the ace of spades opponent checks. Here we went geometric. However. The not wrote ra- ratio shifted. The not ratio shifted. Not ratio shifted on a spade. And we sized down. On asex. Because it's so good for our range. I know, I longhand to type a lot with my notes. Our range. Size down here. 30% pot. I wish I could save these hands to like go over them again somehow. Is there a way to save like? Results breakdown, last zero hands, last 100 hands. I played half excellent, 10% good, inaccurate, a little bit mistaken. I got 10% blunders. So that's kind of interesting. These are my, this is my performance. What is this? Oh yeah, I can put notes in. That's kind of cool. I wish, I wish there was a way to save the hand. Um. What is this? DTO poker. Oh yeah. Okay, whatever. Uh, let's keep on going here. Continue. I'm having fun. This is a fun activity. I really like this drill type uh, structured uh, study sessions. Alright, 8, 7. 9, 5, 3, cut off first button. First things first is that we have all the offsuit nines in our range and button doesn't. So we have a lot more board coverage here than he does. Um. So that I mean, they always have these tricky spots like this where like. They're just like, okay, yes, this, but that too. You know what I mean? Like, but we have a gut shot. Can we? Can we? Check call. Um. I don't think that's correct. I, yeah, like shit, this is a toughie. This is a tough one. Do we go big or we do, do we go small? Okay, so he's gonna have a lot of queen 10 off. I don't think we get queen 10 or jack 10 off to ever fold here. Um. Do we get king, queen to fold? With a big bet? Probably not. Uh. Maybe, maybe we get king, queen to fold, but king, queen of spades, king, queen of diamonds, we don't get to fold. Uh, there, there's only 14 combos left. I think with the king of spades, he's gonna call. And the queen of spades, he may peel too with king, queen. Uh, we can get some of those asex to fold. We can get like uh. What kind of ace can we get to fold? Ace 2 calls, ace 4 calls, ace 6 calls, ace 7 folds, maybe ace 8. Might call with the backdoor straight draw. If they have the ace of spades, they're definitely calling. Yeah, like what do we get him off of here? That's the thing. Like if there's a club here, I'm happy to bet and I'm gonna bet like every time. On a 9xx board. I know we're supposed to be betting close to 100% of our range, cut off first button on 9xx boards, but I could be wrong. So let's go with the. Big bet, I guess. Maybe we bet small. No, we don't. We don't bet small. Okay, 4.7. Okay, we got it right. And he folds. Excellent. That's sweet. We got that one right. Took me a minute though. That's the thing, like to multi-table on, on uh, online, you gotta be able to do these things quickly. Really fast. You gotta come up with the correct decision. You know what I mean? So that's why you do this drill work because you know, you, you drill it into your brain over and over and over again. Eventually, these spots are like no brainers each time. You can have the correct decision in the fraction of a second. Ace 10, 7 verse button, 18 effective. Alright, we have an SPR of about 2.8 or 3, I guess. Um. I think like we either are gonna be big betting this board or we're gonna be checking. Those are our two options. And I think checking is more than acceptable here against overly aggressive opponents. Um, to check raise, so. Betting small's fine on an ace high board. Um. You gotta ask yourself, what are we gonna do with our bluffs here? Like, and we're probably. I like all of his broadways have some kind of straight draw or middle pair. And that makes up quite a big portion of his range. His 9 eights got there, jack nines, jack eights, all have a gut shot and maybe backdoor. Yeah, and have a backdoor flush draw most of the time. He has value on this board and I think he's gonna peel quite frequently. So how do we get as much money in as possible? I think that's how we have to be thinking about this hand. I'm probably gonna just bet big. Yeah, correct. Okay, so we get a queen on the turn. Alright, so. Without, we have the nuts, but you know. Um, he just made a lot of 2 pair hands uh, on this turn, like queen 10. Um, I guess that's it. I'm think, trying to think about the range. I'm correcting myself now. Uh, I don't really think he has ace queen ever. Like I'm just trying to play my range, not my specific hand here, right? So. Are we, I was just thinking, are we ever checking with any portions of our range here? I think we just go for it like with a lot, lot of different hands. I think this is a fine card to continue barreling on, so. Um. Queen 2.9. Do we ever go really tiny here? 6 is like huge. So if we made it 3, that would bring the pot up to 20 and we'll have 11 left. Okay. He calls. River 5 and obviously we jam. Okay, I played it good. Maybe on the turn I was supposed to go bigger. I just thought that like it looked so fucking strong and I put half of my stack out. Like how am I ever doing this with a bluff? You know what I mean? So. Yeah, okay, we wanna go bigger. Got it. We wanna go bigger on the turn. This is why we do this. I'm trying to learn like my sizings. 20 effective. We raise ace of hearts, queen of clubs. 20 big blinds effective. Oh, let's go 20 big blinds. I know what I mean. Uh, we raise. Ace of hearts, queen of clubs on the. Lowjack or hijack wasn't? Lowjack, yeah. It's the first lowjack hand we did in a while. On the lowjack. Button calls flop is. Ace of spades, 10 of diamonds, 7 of clubs. 10 of diamonds, 7 of clubs. We bet 2 thirds. Correctly. Turn is the queen of hearts. Um, here we are actually. Supposed to c-bet. 6 or like 5.7 out of our. 13 big blinds stack. Uh, we went. 3 big blinds to jam river. But even at 13 big blinds. Uh, we bet 6 here. So that's kind of weird. I usually would size down a little bit, but we go 40% pot on the turn and checking's the second best option. I, I think checking's fine cuz I think like. If, if it goes check, check, um. On the river, we still get all the money in, so I think it's fine and it allows him the opportunity to bluff. Cuz like we're gonna be checking here a lot. Like if we played jacks, pocket jacks really bad or pocket nines or pocket eights and but that was on this flop, which would be pretty dumb. But, but a lot of players do it cuz they don't know how to play correctly, so they're gonna bet those hands. And then when this queen on the turn comes, they're, they're gonna look at this like best case scenario. He has these hands and we can get him off of them now. So yeah, yeah. Checking's fine too. Depends on, like it's player dependent though, right? You're playing the player, so. Sometimes checking's better, sometimes betting big is better, sometimes betting small is better, but I think betting big overall is probably the best. If that's GTO. Okay, big blind versus lowjack, ace, queen, jack. Um, all day with a range, we're betting big here. Call. Jack on the turn, uh. GTO opponents are gonna be leading most of their jack X. There's still so many hands that he has that isn't a jack that we're gonna get value from. I think we're just going with this. Um, we're gonna bet 5.2. Yeah, his, his range, yes, it has some jacks, but a GTO opponent's gonna know to lead with most of their jacks, so. Uh, we're just gonna jam. Excellent. Yeah, so on this board, size up always. Turn. Just go geometric, get the money in and all in. Like don't be scared of a jack because he's leading a lot of his jacks. Like most players that have studied know to lead their, their middle and bottom pairs on this, on the turn, right? So. Okay, ace 7 of spades. Uh, hijack, we're in the small line, single raise pot. We actually just flatted this time. We have no leads on this board. We're gonna be checking range. He bets big. These ones I fuck up all the time. Uh, are we deep enough to peel? This is such a good board for him. He has all the offsuit broadways. Like even if he has like queen 10, which is one Broadway that didn't hit this board, he has an open ended straight draw and then like his, he has better asex. And then his bluffs, where do his bluffs come from? Um. Where do his bluffs come from here? His bluffs are coming from his queen X hands and 10 X hands, like 10, 7 suited, 10, 8 suited, 10, 9 suited. Queen 9 suited, queen 8 suited and ace 4, ace 5 suited, maybe ace 2 suited with backdoors. So I think we have to fold. I'm folding. Okay, good. We got 5 in a row. Now that's good. Best 5 in a row. The best I ever did was 9 in a row. Alright, ace, queen off. Uh, lowjack opens, we call on the hijack, 28 effective. He checks this board. Um, I think we just gotta take, just take our equity here and check. I don't really see a reason to bet. This board connects reasonably well with him and if we get check raise, we're, we're gonna have to fold, but we do have a gut shot. Um, we're at that stack depth where we really can't like peel with check raises too, too much, so I'm, I'm gonna check. Okay, ace on the turn, really good card for us. Um, he checks again. That makes me think maybe he was trying to set up a check raise with maybe a king. And we block queen jack, so that's good. Um. So I am going to bet. Yeah, he has capped his range. Do we go with the overbet here? I think overbetting is pretty sweet cuz I think he has a lot of hands like queen X of spades. Jack X of spades, that's. Gonna have a hard time with it. So if we make it 6, the pot, and he calls, the pot's gonna be like 15, what would it be? 18, 19, 20? We're gonna have 22. We're gonna have a pot sized jam. He has a lot of 2 pairs here. He does. He has a lot of 2 pairs, but you know, most. Players are gonna bet their 2 pair on the turn. It's pretty tricky to check your 2 pair on this turn. If you had like ace 10. Ace 10's a hand that would conceivably check. Maybe king 10 checks to trap sometimes. Pocket kings, pocket 10s, do a lot of checking, pocket aces. Do some checking here, but I'm mostly just gonna be betting those. He doesn't pot the turn, so he's not like, he'd figure like a lot of his draws, he would pot the turn, so. We block queen jack. He has some, a lot of worse aces in his range. He's ace 9 suited, ace 8 suited, ace 7 suited, ace 6, ace 5, ace 4 suited beats us, but ace 3 and ace 2. So I think he's gonna be doing quite a bit of checking with those worse aces. And from a GTO point of view, I think he has to call this with a king still. So yeah, we did good. What's the correct size here? Uh, the correct size is 60% pot. So. 30 effective. 30 big blinds, lowjack. We call. On hijack with. What suits? Ace of diamonds, queen hearts, ace of diamonds, queen of hearts. Flop is. King of spades, 10 of spades. Uh, something, I can't remember. Uh, king 10, 4 of diamonds? Lowjack checks. We check behind. Oh shit. Checks, we check correctly. Turn is the ace of clubs. Like I definitely don't think he's capped though, so. He checks. Shit. Pot is 6.2 big blinds or something like that. We say to bet here 100% pot. Shit. Percent pot, 104% pot. However. Fuck. 28 deep. We just bet. 60% pot. Fuck, I'm typing bad. Sorry about that. 60% pot. By no means is lowjack capped. Like one general rule of thumb for overbetting is like you wanna do it when you have a lot of bluffs in your range and your opponent is pretty capped. Those are kind of the criteria for overbetting, so like I understand. That a slight overbet is probably a little aggressive for sure. Um, because he's not cap, he's on capped. Um, but I just saw that his range contains, contains a lot of suited aces and. We get a lot of value from those and he's probably gonna peel with some king X. So, but 60% pot is the correct sizing. Yeah. We just bet 60% pot here. Oh fuck, it's doing that? I fucking hate when it does that. You gotta exit, go back in. It's like starts deleting everything, right? Like. While you were trying to fix something. By. No means is lowjack capped. Uh, linear bet the turn. Plus like what bluffs do we have on the turn? Like I, I guess we have some, but not many because like, okay. Like 40, we'll go 40 or 25. Uh, lowjack versus hijack or hijack versus lowjack. Um, we'll check our range. Alright, this is our flattening range. This is our flattening range. On this board. How does this connect with that? Uh, pretty good. Pretty good. Like our worst hands are a pair of 10s. Like queen 10 has the redraw. Jack 10, king 10's 2 pair, king jack is pretty good hand, all these suited aces. Like what are our worst hands that we're gonna have here? Like we. Yeah, we just uh, we connect very well with this board. Like we have a lot of king X and we have a lot of asex, but then all of our king X. Has gut shots too, so like our, we connect really well. And then, you know, 25. First lowjack. Or just 25 on the lowjack, our opening range. Yeah, so we're definitely gonna have a range advantage here. Look at all this junk he has. All this shit, like they're weighing him down, all the worst pairs. Um, yeah, he just, he has a lot more junk than we do, so we definitely have the range advantage here. So yeah, we're, we're gonna get all that to fold and we're probably gonna get him to fold his 10s too here. Without a spade, so. So that was a fun one. So we bet a little too big on the turn. Exploitative versus calling stations, sure, have at her, but um, versus a GTO opponent, you have to be. So we bet a little too big on the turn. Exploitative versus calling stations, sure, have at her, but um, versus a GTO opponent, so you have to be betting smaller there. So that's cool. Alright, hijack, we call on the cutoff, comes king, queen, six. We don't have a diamond in our hand. Uh, I'm checking. I'm checking. I know we could have the best hand, but just because we think we have the best hand is not a reason to bet. A lot of old school players think that way, but it's. Just because you have the best hand does not mean you bet. Uh, these hands do well checking, checking down. Uh, we get a nine on the turn. Check, check, check. Uh, I think he has a lot of queen X. Can we get him off of that? Probably not unless we bet the river as well. Do we have any relevant blockers? No, we don't. We, we don't have any, like his worst queens are gonna be queen ten. So our blockers, we're gonna wanna have her like ten, nine, ten, eight. Um, which we may or may not have ten, eight suited. I don't think we do. Uh, twenty-five cutoffers hijack, I don't think so. I don't think we have ten, eight suited. I know we have ten, nine suited, but. Ten eight suit is a pure three bet, isn't it? Is that at this stack depth? Twenty-five cutoffers hijack, ten, eight suited. No, it isn't. It's deeper. We gotta be deeper. We have a little bit of ten, eight suited. I think it's sixty, that's when we three bet it, right? Uh, yeah, hundred percent almost pure. So yeah, we're a little, we're like our bluffs come from a little bit worse stuff. We don't really three bet this. Suited connected kind of shit. It's more, uh, the, uh, these, uh, Broadway suited Broadway type. High card, low card hands, so the, and they're, are gonna be our, our three about bluffs, so. They go up in value due to the fact that we can stack off with top pairs. Whereas at sixty big blinds deep, we can make it straight with this hand and we need better hands to get it all in, um, deeper stacked, so. So yeah, I'm checking back. Just gonna check ten on the river. No reason to bet, just take our showdown. We're gonna win sometimes. He had ace nine, so. He won, but you know, we're gonna win sometimes. We have better bluffs with more relevant blockers. Uh, so yeah, well played. We're at seven in a row. That's cool. Alright, uh, big blind versus button. Jack six deuce. Uh, he, button's gonna be betting range here. So we're just gonna check. And he's gonna bet and of course we're gonna raise. There's nothing else we can do. He folds. Nothing else you can do there. Just gotta check raise. Alright, low jack, king ten, six. Um, okay, so this is like my propensities in game and versus a GTO propensities in game. I usually take the low variance route with these types of hands, like middle pairs and I usually just check them back. On the low jack, we don't really have like jack ten off here. We don't have queen ten off. Um, queen jack off, we probably have, like we can look at the range for like twenty on the hijack. First in range is twenty hijack. Twenty hijack. Oh, we do have, oh, fuck, okay, at twenty. When are we, when are we folding them? Nope. Alright, yeah, we do have them. I don't know what I'm thinking. Brain fart, I guess. Okay, so we do have the off suits, king ten, six. Button should have a lot of suited kings here. I would imagine like, uh, button versus low jack for twenty. Uh, button versus low jack for twenty. Button should have some king X. Uh, three betting all the suited ones, but you know, these ones are more prominent because we have three times more of them, right? So. So yeah, so yeah, we probably have more king X here. I'm just gonna be checking though. I think small betting is acceptable though. He bet small, easy call, easy game. Turns a king. It's a card that he's not gonna be betting very often as a bluff, so. He has some worse, uh, ten X in his range for sure. He has ten, nine, ten, eight. Um, he might go for a small bet on this turn still. Yeah, we can just check call. No way we're folding. And, uh, I don't really see a reason to lead here or anything. Well, we just lead. Alright, all in. Good. I played it good. Alright. Okay, so checking the flop, best decision, betting, betting big here actually is good. Okay, weird. I would have thought betting smaller like would be better. Okay. I guess our C bet on this board is sixty percent pot. Uh, it's a king ten X board. Yeah, that's right, I guess. On king ten X, king nine X, ace ten X boards, we usually, our C bet's gonna be bigger. Due to the fact that there's a lot of gut shots and, uh. Different types of draws, so our bet size is gonna be big, so I'm gonna note that in my notes. Okay. Uh, I did, I didn't know that that was gonna apply in this scenario. Um, alright, so check, we go check, which is fine. And then we call. So we check all, because I know middle pairs, usually we bet small out of position like we're going to. But on king ten, six, it's so connected, there's a lot of straight draws. So we go bigger. So that's cool. Didn't know that would apply here, but that's, that's good to know. Alright, so we check all, which is same EV basically, probably because they're, they're indifferent. So check call, turn, we check. Oh man, twenty-five percent leads the best and I was thinking like. He is not going to be bluffing here with his hands that have equity on a king. It's like one of the under, most underbluffed fucking cards that you, you run into when the top card pairs on the turn. People shut down with all of their like low equity bluffs. But they would be willing to call a twenty-five percent lead and I thought about that, but. These types of things like, uh, they're very high, high level, high level thoughts and I'm getting there for sure, but. I thought it, it came across my mind, but I was like, eh, let's just check and keep him with all his bluffs. But he's gonna check back a lot with his queen jacks and his queen nines and ace jacks like here, so. So yeah, like I, I do like this lead. That's worth noting. Um, checking is fine too. That's where we fucked up the hand and on the river. Or no, we call and then on the river, all in is best. So we just lead all in. We're getting it all in anyway. I just thought, you know, I'm always like, I think a li- I think I, um. One like leak I have is that I really overvalue the information of keeping our opponents in with all of their bluffs and I'm always trapping. Trying to trap. You know what I mean? So I kind of put a little bit too much weight on that. Alright, twenty effective, we raise on the low jack. Twenty big blinds, we raise on low jack. Button calls. Flop is. King ten, six. King ten, six. Alright, first thing, we say small betting. Is the play. Otherwise, we check. However, on king ten. X boards. It applies. That we see bet sixty percent here. Sixty percent pot here even. So no small betting. Uh, we check. Uh. He bet, did he bet? I can't remember. Uh, yeah, he, he bet half pot. He bet fifty percent. We call. Turn is the king. Board pairing card, top, top board pair. Here we check. But this is a very. A very underbluffed card. And leading. For twenty-five percent pot is the highest equity play here. And river. Uh, yeah, we check call. River's a ten. A ten. Pot is twenty. We have ten. Uh, as played. We lead jam this turn. Forget about. About his boats. Yeah, I guess. I, I don't know what he could call with maybe a stubborn pocket nines calls once in a while, but pocket nines, pocket queens. Chops. Okay. Continue, let's do another. Okay, king four in the big blind, eighteen big blinds deep. I don't really think this is gonna be a three bet versus low jack versus, uh. Versus button and cutoff, yeah, a little bit perhaps at twenty, like these blocker bluffs are gonna be coming sometimes. Um, at twenty versus but, that's twelve, sorry. Twenty versus button. See? Oh, it gets worse at twenty-five, that's when they're. Yeah, yeah, at twenty-five, we have them at twenty, we kind of have even worse ones. So that's kind of interesting. I haven't really studied these twenty big blind charts much, to be honest. I've studied the shit out of twenty-five big blinds, but not so much twenty, they're kind of new. And with my job, I don't have much time to study pre-flop, so, but definitely it is important. Nobody likes studying pre-flop. But it is important. So jack for deuce, um, without a spade in our hand, check. Uh, we're gonna be check raising here. I think we wanna check raise like spades and we're gonna wanna check raise our fours and deuces that wrap around the, with the card that wraps around. Them for the backdoor straight draw. I don't really think this is gonna be one of our check raises without a spade. But I could be wrong. He went big too. He went quite big. Um. Yeah, he went about half pot. If he went with a twenty percent pot bet, I think we'd have more check raising, but I think to this size, we're just gonna call. Correctly. Alright, ace on the turn, check. Um, can we fold this hand? Without a spade, I think we can. Excellent. Alright, moving on. Uh, six, three offsuit, ace, seven, four, no diamonds. Um, this is a check fold. I'm not even. Well, we do have, uh, open and a straight draw, but we don't have a diamond. And he went big. Okay, yay, we did another one. Is calling bad or what? Uh, check and calling's a minus ten. Okay, so calling's even with the gut shot, yeah, we just fold. Figured, um, without a diamond, we just can't really continue. Okay, big blind versus button, queen jack. This is a good one. Oh, we three bet. This is a three bet pot, a hundred big blinds deep, king, king, six. Alright, this is the one where we go small on, I know that. Pair boards, definitely going small. Uh, do we ever size up? Alright. Okay, I gotta write that down. Sorry guys. A hundred big blinds deep. Hundred effective. We three bet. Uh, button in big line with queen of clubs, jack of clubs, he calls. Flop is. Uh, king of spades, king of diamonds, six clubs, king of spades, king of diamonds, six of clubs. Uh, we say. To see bet. Twenty-five percent pot, which is okay. However. Here, the best play. Is to see bet. What sizing sixty percent? Sixty percent pot. Pot to knock out. His backdoor. I would imagine. Yeah, that makes sense because he's gonna be able to flow with a lot of like backdoor flush draws, like with the backdoor straight draw type hands like ace, queen, ace, jack, ace, ten. Um, but to the big bet, we can get him to fold those. So yeah, I get it. Sixty percent pot here. Yeah, this is why we go over these spots, you know, my sizings are a little off in a lot of spots, so. Continue. Pocket fives in the small blind, ace, jack, four, uh, forty-seven big blinds deep. Single raise pot this time. If we're gonna have a check raise bluff, this is probably one of them, I think. I could be wrong, but. If, what other check raise bluffs could we find here? Okay, ten, nine, makes a little bit of sense. Uh, queen ten. King ten, king nine maybe with the backdoor flush draw. Uh, okay, I don't think this is one, gonna be one of our check raises. I think if it's like ace, eight, four, ace, seven, three. Ace, seven deuce, then pocket fives would be our bluff. I don't, I think this board is connected enough that we could find enough bluffs. To not the bluff with our pocket pairs, like deuces through fives. So I'm gonna check, of course. We have no leading range here. He's betting big. Uh, I'm gonna peel. I'm gonna peel, but I'm not loving it. Okay, now we pick up the, uh, the gut shot on the turn. So. What hands do we have in this scenario that we can turn the nuts is what we have to be asking ourselves. Um. And we don't have any. We have zero zilch. We have pocket deuces. Um. I guess queen ten. Yeah, I guess queen ten and king ten. Queen ten, king ten. And those are better blockers too. Those are better blockers, they like ace, king, ace, ten, queen, ace, queen, queen, jack. Huh, pocket fives. Okay, let's check. Let's see if he bets here. Check, check. Okay, he didn't even fucking bet. He didn't even fucking bet. I was thinking, is this one gonna be our check raise type hand? Uh, jack on the river, it goes check back call. Check, check. River's a flush completer. Uh, blocking is not GTO, so I don't think we block. Check, bet, call, check, check. Hmm. Check, bet, call, check, check. He played it like a jack. A lot of his jack X are gonna do the same fucking thing, so. Check, check. Uh, we played it good. I was just wondering if we ever lead the river's a bluff. Uh, no, okay, good. So check is the best play, calling, folding's better. Alright. So do we have a raise? Never. Okay, good. It was ace, seven, three or ace, seven, two. I think we do check raise sometimes as a bluff because we have no bluffs there. Uh, okay, so check. And river, check. We never lead. Okay, so we played it well. I just want to write down that we're supposed to fold the flop. Uh, fifty effective. Fifty big blinds. Hijack, was it hijack or low jack? Just double check. Hijack, yeah, raises. We call in small blind with. Uh, five of spades, five of clubs. How long is this video now? Oh wow, we're getting along. I get it. I get doing this and I just keep on going. Anyway, let's end this and I will come back with part two. How's that sound? Alright guys, thanks for watching. Don't forget to like and subscribe.